Let them come up and introduce themselves, talk about who they are, their plans, and we'll take two questions after each one of them. And then Monty and then Jeff. What I'd like to do first, I'll flag, I'll sing, and flag your limits for flag.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Thank you. And I ask Fred Innes that he would have a prayer for us before we start, please.
Okay. That's right. God, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the opportunities you've given us this day. We pray that everything we've done and said will be deemed pleasing in your sight. We thank you to give our country a freedom. We have the freedom to choose who our leaders will be in our governmental process. And we pray that you will bless that function and forever keep it as part of our constitution that we can have and enjoy this freedom. We thank you for the speakers here tonight, what they stand for, and we want each of us to seek diligently who you think we should vote for as the best candidate to lead our county. Thank you again for your many blessings. Forgive us for our sins, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
James, if you'd like to come up and sing, please.
It's more of a slave prop than anything, so. Good evening, everyone. For those I haven't met, my name is James Gordon. I live on River Road. If you've been down River Road, you'll see Springfield Distillery. That's where my family is. I... The question's asked, why am I deciding to run for Board of Supervisors? I think I echo the sentiment of a lot of people within the county. I'm extremely dissatisfied with how our administration is being run. And rather than sit around and complain about it, I figured it was time for me to step up and do something about it. So that is the reason for being in free race. Earlier on this year, I was approached and asked if I would be able, available, and willing to put my hand up for Board of Supervisors. And since then, it's been a very interesting journey. I really want to make sure that what we focus on when we talk about, you know, how do we pick the right candidate moving forward, is make sure we pick the people who are in the best position to be able to take care of all of your needs, and also look after the needs of the vital county. It's, I think it's, it goes without saying that there is a certain amount of division within the county. The hot topic item for everybody is solar. If you have a solar farm on your doorstep, you don't want solar. If you have land and you want to be able to put in a solar farm, they call them farms, I don't believe they are, if you want to put in solar, then obviously it's something that you're very interested in. The bottom line for me when it comes to solar is I do not believe that it is the key to our future prosperity in the county. At the moment, it's a distraction, and it's something that we squabble about. But when you look at the actual revenue return that comes from the solar, it doesn't move the dial enough. So while all of our county administration is spending all their time spinning their wheels, arguing for or against solar, we're missing the other real opportunities. We have to make sure that we, as a community, continue to grow. Because if we do not, eventually there's no one left to pay our taxes. And we are facing a declining population. However, it's not all doom and gloom. We have significant industrial investment coming into the county, and we need to make sure that we do everything that we can to continue to revitalize our downtown areas and start stimulating economic growth within the county. That means we have to remove impediments to small businesses, businesses setting up and opening up shop in Halifax. We have to make it easy for people to do business in Halifax. We should be open for business. It's a criticism I've given the Board of Supervisors over the last 10 years, and I continue with that today. We need to make it easy for people to come here, set up business, and give it a go. Sure, there'll be failures along the way. That's, that's the American system. Somebody will step in when somebody else fails, they'll pack up the pieces and they'll move on. So we have to be open for business, and we have to continue to see ourselves grow. To that end, one of the great examples that was brought home to me when I started collecting signatures for my campaign, I, one afternoon, I went and I sat at Dollar General at Turberville and spoke to a horde of people as they had finished work for the day and were stopping at Dollar General before they drove home. And what allowed me was the vast majority of people that were passing through were leaving the county at the end of the day. There are all these people who are working in the county, they don't live here, they live elsewhere. So we actually lose out on a lot of revenue because of the circumstances with that. If, we know that we have to look after housing, we know we have to create that middle tier of housing within the county. We know that we have to create the opportunity for people to come and settle here. And those are the things that will remain my priorities, making sure we are positive, we are moving forward by making it easy for people to come and invest and enjoy the absolutely wonderful environment that we decided to be a part of when we moved to Halifax about 14 years ago. We have always been very welcomed by the community, we think it's a fantastic place to live. I've always said to people, given every choice in the world, I chose Halifax. So I will fight for Halifax, and I will fight to represent each and every one of you. So much like my position with regards to solar, I don't have to be for or against it. What I have to do is I have to be able to see both sides of the argument. I have to be able to look at it pragmatically and say, while I may not be a fan of solar, and I can tell you I'm not a fan of, I'm a very much a fan of property rights. So if an individual wants to do something like that, and they can demonstrate that they are not having an adverse impact on their neighbors, and that's something that we should be making sure of, because they didn't do it in Alton. And Alton is a disaster. You drive down the road and there's double-stacked solar panels right on the roadside. Everybody promises they're going to put in buffers, they're going to do all sorts of things, they don't necessarily do it. And that's also something that I will make sure that we, as the Board of Supervisors, do, is follow up on all of those promises. And make sure those individuals deliver on what they said they would do when they sold us the bullet goods or what it is they were going to put into the county. So I'm asking for your support, I'm asking for your vote. I hope that you do pick me, if you pick my opponent, that's, you know, that's your choice, and I welcome it. It's the United States. But I really hope that you join me in making sure that we have the right person to fight against the nonsense that we currently have within our Board of Supervisors. We get things sorted out, and we get moving ahead with our serious business, because it is serious business, and we've got a lot to achieve. So I'm excited about the future, and I'm sure you'll all be excited about it as well. So if I could have your support, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
(Applause) Anybody got questions, Ford?
No questions? Nobody even want to know why I sounded funny? Yes, sir.
What district are you running under? We're in a split district.
Yes, sir. I'm in, I'm in District 6.
District 6.
Yeah, so myself and Monty Thompson are running for District 6.
District 8.
Yes, sir.
And after we finish, we're going to have refreshments and whatnot, and we can ask them questions and chat with them one-on-one, so.
Yeah, if anybody's got any questions, I always try to give as considerate an answer as possible, so, you know, feel free to disagree with me, and I welcome the opportunity to talk with each and every one of you. So thank you very much for your time, and if they have any questions, I will hand off to the next guy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(Applause) Monty Thompson? He lives in the Cliffs Springs area.
Yes, ma'am. I'm a Dikembe Blackwater Baptist church. I was born and raised in Halifax County. I'm not the speaker that my phone is, I didn't get to get to get, but I've got common sense. I'm not going to make sound decisions. Like, was talking about solar, I get asked a lot, what my thoughts are on solar. But that's a tough situation, no matter what you say, you're going to be wrong. And if you go forward, somebody's going to be mad, or against it, somebody's going to be mad. So it's a win-win. So the only thing I, I can say, you look at, each case separately, and you've got to think, and meet all the guidelines, and somebody can vote according to it. And it's the only choice we have. I'm committed to our father's causes, to our first responders, to our law enforcement agencies. They do a great job, and we need to support them in a way that can. James, tell them, we need better jobs in Halifax County. Like I said, we're losing people, and we need better homes, affordable homes. We've got all these people coming in for the tachy. I think somebody's going to want to retire jobs. But these people have got to have somewhere to live, and then another thing they've got to look at is childcare.
Yeah.
I mean, that's going to be a big deal. It's hard to work when you've got to pay a babysitter what you make. I know when, when I was a young man raising a family, I had that problem. Some week my babysitter got half of my paycheck. We need entertainment. Right now, we don't have a whole lot to draw people in or to make them in a stadium when we get here. We need to make sure that Board Supervisors spend a number of lives. One example that I, Hatachi asked for, I think $57,000 for some lights in at the ball They told, told the guys that they had the money to do it, they just wanted Halifax to feel like it was a part of it. And so they were giving the money. But in my way, I'm thinking that money could have went somewhere else and helped somebody out a whole lot more than with that ball field. Especially when you want to own to the public, no way. So, for the employees. The reason I got into this, my daughter said, Dad, why don't you run for Board Supervisors? And I said, I'm not a politician. She said, you don't need to be, you've got common sense, you don't have to make good decisions. I'll go and check it out. So I'm not too weak. And I couldn't believe what I was seeing. Clayville was manipulating people. Then after a cook meeting, I said, yeah, I'll, I'll take that position. I think I do a lot better job than what I've been doing up there. Looking to sell the raises, and then after that, everybody got so mad that they took it away. I mean, damn it, you don't, I didn't share the crew colors. That's a decision that I would never make. And I wouldn't have took it if I had. It's just so much, you wonder where you're coming from, all these decisions they make. I think I do a lot better job, I know I don't talk about as much stuff as James does. I'd like to have his support, and I'll do the best I can, and I'll make good decisions, for sure. That's all I got.
Anybody have any questions? Like I said, afterwards, we can chat with them.
Okay. One more thing I'd like to address.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I imagine some of y'all have been seeing this flyer right here going around. I have no idea where it's coming from, who's behind it. It says that we're paid for by the private property rights pact. No, not authorized by any candidate. Why send a man with my name on it rather than a letter? For all I intend to find out. Rather than, let's all know I have nothing to do with this, I have nothing to say to the dime that he wants. Every dime I spend comes from local people and myself.
Thank you. And then we'll hear from Jeff.
I'm glad to say the best of life. (Laughter) Thank you, Chip, for that three-sided coin that you had. Really difficult to think of where to begin with my critique of the Board Supervisors, and not come off as... I don't even know if I want to say the word, actually. Has a smart behind me. But probably six, maybe seven months ago, I was approached by someone from Richmond asking if I would take over the Republican Party of Halifax County. I said, no, thank you. I had been chairman of the Republican Party of Halifax County before. Subsequently to that, I got a phone call, and I was asked, would I mend fences between the conservative group and Republican Party of Halifax County? I said, no, I'd rather not be intermediary between two people that are reasonably like-minded, but for whatever reason have decided to go their separate ways. And then finally, I got a phone call from Rob Moore's wife and a couple of other people, and they asked me what I consider running for Board Supervisors in District 3, currently served by Reverend Hubert Pennell. And I said, well, let me chew on it a little bit. I haven't been to a board meeting in many years, probably since I was sheriff, maybe once or twice since then, but that was '07. So I went to a couple of board meetings and found out quickly that we had big problems. And James coined the phrase dysfunctional. I called it a dysfunctional mess. Question is, how do we fix it? When you have, over the course of six or eight months, your Director of Finance resigned, your Director General of Properties resigned, your Building Inspector resigned, your Executive Assistant to the County Administrator resigned, and then you terminate your County Administrator, you've got very big problems. You have dug yourself a tremendous hole, and when the hole gets too deep, you quit digging. That, that's common sense, as Monty was referencing. Well, that board lacks common sense, apparently. And we've got to do something collectively to change that. We're going backwards instead of forward. Had a town hall meeting Sunday, and had pretty good attendance, and one of the questions that I asked people was, what has Hubert Pennell done for Halifax County in the last 12 years? Lord behold, he shows up about 10 minutes later and sat through the remainder of the meeting. Never asked a question, but at the end, he came up and asked me what I vote for, and I told him absolutely. And I did it all. But to me, that was reflective of the mentality in Halifax. What can you do for me, not what I can do for you. Service before self is the motto on my sign. I've been a father, I've been a virgin forever, a lion, a deputy, a sheriff, and all kinds of things in between. I want to continue in that same vein, protecting the people that I serve. But we've got to do it thoughtfully and sincerely. And when you are on the Board Supervisors, and you are on the Finance Committee, and you collectively decide, we need $7,000 rates. We're already making $11,000 a year, one of the highest fees that any county around is charging, I think it is the highest. We need $7,000 more. Then they have a little bit of a debate and go down to $5,000. And they agree to $5,000, and then the next month, they take it back. But some votes changed in between on some solar projects. Coincident. That didn't sit well with me, and that was sort of a determining factor in my decision to go ahead and try, try to run for Board Supervisors and get rid of Hubert Pennell. But I have a laundry list of things that have been done poorly and continue to be done poorly and unaddressed by March. Cell phone signal service in my district, which is right across the road, is invisible. Internet service is the same. I know Empower is right around the corner of getting everything restored in that respect. But we've got two antennas in my district, you notice my home, that have no equipment on them. One at H&amp;H grocery, one at Eagle School. The one at H&amp;H, the continuing, the condition of use permit was approved in 2019, has not an antenna on the tower. I asked the Director of Planning and Zone, Dietrich Deasy, who's a nice young man, what was the hole of? And already knew the answer. He said it was a height restriction. Didn't say a thing. It's 199 feet tall. It's as high as it can be with a tower light on it. But nobody followed through to put any equipment on it, because the property has a lean on it. It's in a trust, so nobody can put anything on top of it. The Eagle Tower was built by the county on school property. What a mistake. So they have finally agreed to share in the income, any revenue that comes from the tower. Still nothing on the tower. Addressing those two issues, I think Hubert Pennell is on the Internet Committee, I don't know exactly what the committee is, but irregardless, he has never done anything to push those two things forward so that the people up there have service. We dropped, I talked to a guy the other day, and most of you know him, Bruce Pierce. He said he had a four-by-four cubicle in his kitchen in which he could talk on his cell phone when he needed to. One of the biggest issues that we have, and it's going to be expensive, is fire rescue and law enforcement communications. The Fire Commission wrote the Board Supervisors a letter in October of last year. I have a copy of it with me. We have a terrible system, we have dead zones everywhere, we have radios that don't work, and we have emergency services personnel in danger. The other side of that coin is, you're in danger. Because if they get to your house and they can't call anybody to help you, the help's not coming. And what the county did four or five years ago was bought an antique system. When they took a lot of it out of the package, the batteries were dead on the walkie-talkies and didn't function at all, couldn't be charged. It's a commercial communication system in a rural setting. That doesn't work. It's going to cost millions of dollars to replace it. And I asked this question Sunday, is your life worth a million dollars? It is to me. So I have no problem with that. We'll get grants, we'll get federal funding, we'll get state funding, we'll get TBI commission money, whatever it takes to piece it together to save lives. And the fact that the board did not make a move on that until August of this year really pisses me off. And there's no reason to mince words. How you waited, how you sat on the letter from the Fire Commission that was signed by all but two of the 14 representatives and did nothing? And then you decide, well, we're going to look at the company that we just made the last installment to as someone to move forward with, or we're going to look at the SARS program that the state police promotes. There are other avenues out there. Last night, we had Bert Martin and Steve Phillips both get up and speak at the board meeting. And they strongly encouraged the Board Supervisors to hire a consultant to come up with a good system that is bulletproof. I'm waiting to see what they did. People's lives hanging in balance, and I can't say anything more than that. I lived that when Todd Moser was working a cobbel out of Cherry Hill Church, and he had a guy combated inside the house, and he couldn't do anything with it. The guy finally got a little bit of advantage, went outside and handed him Todd's vehicle, his county vehicle. He called for help, he called for help, no help was coming. Todd shot and killed that guy. And he scarred the life because of, because of crappy radio. We've got to do better. Things that James and Monty both talked about, economic development. We need, we need workforce development, very badly. We need to go through the high school, the higher ed center, whatever it takes, we need to train people. Hatachi is waiting for people to come and work for him. The problem is, they can't pass a drug test. So what we did, once you get the workforce up, like, like Monty talked about, you've got to have housing for them. We've got no housing. They're going to build a 96-unit facility up next to our house on 58. And Hatachi wants to hire 850 people. We'll be a lot of people stacked up inside their rooms. So those are a few things that we need to work on right away. We don't need to wait. And if we don't change the complexion of the board, it's not going to happen. Right now, the Board Supervisors is in combat with the school board over money that the Board Supervisors has no right to. They have 48 civil cases that school boards have sued the Board Supervisors. Guess who won all 48? The school boards. So the county right, right at this moment, is preventing the school board from accessing the funding to do the sports complex or the hospital. Money continues to roll in on the 1% tax, the 1% sales tax, but it goes to school funding, and it can't be co-mingled with other county money. So we've got to get something resolved with that, and it's going to court in the next couple of weeks. The Board Supervisors will lose, and they'll have to pay an attorney, and the school board will pay an attorney, and we're not making any progress whatsoever. So, Monty talked about common sense. That's all it takes. And a little bit of cooperative effort between the parties involved. It was almost laughable. Last night, they were talking about discussing having a special election with the treasurer. Ruth Anderson retired, Shana Petzel was appointed by the judge to be interim treasurer. And the discussion was, we have a special election, it's going to cost the county $50,000. Or we wait till November the 3rd and have the regular general election, and it doesn't cost the county anything. Forensic audit coming up. That's supposed to be returnable in February. So the argument was, do we wait till February and have a special election after the report? Or do we go ahead and move it out to November and roll the dice on what the report reflects, if there's any improprieties coming from the finance department? And it ended on a four-to-four vote with one member of the Gang of Five, that I don't mind calling them the Gang of Five, because they stick together like thieves. One member of the Gang of Five who wasn't there, he was doing it at the meeting virtually, he voted in favor of going to November 3rd. Then the tiebreaker, Wayne Smith, was, was put into action. And he used common sense. I felt a lot of the check. He said, we can save $50,000. We have to push it out six or eight more months, but the report will be in by then, and the citizens can vote on what they want to do November the 3rd. So it passed, with the tiebreaker passing the deciding vote. And that was a expression to me, one that one of the members of the Gang of Five used in common sense. And secondarily, that Wayne Smith as the tiebreaker used his influence to make the right decision for the county. So we've got a lot of hurdles to get over, and it's going to take hard work. We've got a new county administrator if he will accept the contract. And that would be a big step in, in getting things moving again. The current lady who is acting in both capacities is being paid $25,500 a month. That's not your now money. (Laughter) And the thing that really bothered me with that was, Halifax County... And the thing that really bothered me with that was Halifax County pays dues to the Virginia Association of Counties. VACO. VACO has a website. They advertise anybody who have, any position you have open, will advertise it to you. Halifax County didn't advertise the Director of Finance until the twenty-ninth day of August. And Stephanie Jackson left at the end of February. They put it in the newspaper, but they didn't get any applicants that were worthy of interviews. So the, the county doesn't use the resources that are there for them, that they pay for, that you pay for, to get the job done. And it's stupid. There's no way around it. And we, as taxpayers, suffer as a result because now we're paying twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars to this lady. And as soon as Ron Brady decides we're not going to take that job, maybe we cut that in half. But we've got a lot to do. And I think I have the right mindset, reasonable amount of intelligence. And I've been a county employee for twelve years and managed million-dollar budgets. So, uh, I, I, I'm not going in blind. And I would appreciate those of you who are in District Three to vote for me and support me and pray for me. Thank you. Questions over the list, Lisa can ask me any questions.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, Mommy.
I'm interested in the cell phone service. So many of us rely on that.
Absolutely.
With no landmine. What, what can be done? What would you do? Can we move the towers and get things activated?
Well, when the tower at H&amp;H was approved, a second tower was in the process, and the Planning Commission and the Board voted, while the Planning Commission supported it, Board Supervisors voted against it on the Myers property on Oklahoma Road. What, what we have to do is find vendors who are willing to go on the tower. I don't know that they can go on the tower at H&amp;H. So we may very well have to approach the Myers family and see if they would be willing to put another tower up on their property and go from there. But if you drop off Mountain Road, you lose every signal. You don't, you can't pick up the tower at Chadon Road, and you're in trouble.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing it.
Yeah, there were some questions about how the property changed hands. Forrest Davis was the landowner. And it's, it's in a, it's in a trust that nobody's been able to break evidently so that they can put equipment on the tower. Sad situation.
Anybody else have a question? If not, thank you, Jeff. Thank all three of you. Um, I hope everybody would stay and have refreshments. If you want to chat with any one of them, it's your opportunity. I thank all of you for being here. Yes, sir.
And I say so.
Absolutely.
All y'all were here, is the word is vote, vote, vote. Especially in this district, Pannell has got advantage. Go vote early, it's easy. Most of us say this, and yes, you can go vote. But the word is vote, vote, vote. Take the time, go early. That's all I have to say.
When you go early, they ask you off the first side, right?
Yes, they do.
They do. Yeah. Thank y'all for that.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's me. And that's the end of the candidate forum, but I'm going to try to see if I can get some people to talk to me and do some interviews while I'm here. Most of them are saying they don't want to be on camera. So be patient with me. Let's see. Excuse me, sir. I'm doing a live stream video. Would you care to comment on camera?
Sure.
Okay, here we go. So tell me who you are.
I am Doc Clark.
Yeah, and where are you from?
Uh, Union Church. I'm from Old Gaby Road.
Yeah, your whole life?
My whole life, I've lived in South Boston area.
Okay, what do you do, what did you do or do for a living?
I'm a retired Dominion employee.
Oh, oh. Do you do meter stuff?
I have done meter service. I've climbed towers.
I just talked to this gentleman here, and he was telling me all about it too. Yeah. Okay, so how involved do you feel in the local politics? Have you always been that way, involved?
I've always voted. Always been involved in, but I've always voted.
Okay, so tell me a little bit more about the Union, you said Union Church?
Union Church, yeah.
Community. What all's here? Tell me, what would make me want to come visit Union Church? Obviously, there's a Ruertan Club because I'm here.
That's a Ruertan Club. It's also a community. And we get together with the blacks and the whites. We have the interest working. But Union Ruertan is a very good community to live in. It's mostly rural, a lot of big farms, but it's a wonderful place to live.
What do the farmers do?
Um, a lot of them have cattle. A lot of them do grain or, uh, uh, crop.
Right, right. Okay, so what do you do for entertainment?
Oh, entertainment, of course, we have to go to South Boston.
What do you do in South Boston for entertainment?
Yeah, we have been to the Pride Inn in downtown South Boston, done a lot of stuff.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And we like Halifax. Halifax is great.
What do you do here at the Ruertan Club? You said that, you said everybody meets and gathers and does what?
Of course, Ruertan is a community, bring people in. So we, we have stew, we have a swimming pool, we do several fundraises. We give away a lot of scholarships, which brings the community.
What kind of scholarships?
Uh, college scholarships.
Ah, that's wonderful.
Eight or nine thousand dollar scholarships this year.
Right.
Through the efforts of the Ruertan making stew and other things that we do.
So, pardon my ignorance, I don't know anything about Ruertan clubs, is it? But I've heard of like Lions and Moose Clubs and stuff like that. Is it kind of the same idea?
We're a little bit different, and we build communities. We try to, if you move in a community, we welcome you to learn how to cook stews, learn how to keep the roads clean. We, we, it's all about involvement in the community, and that's what Ruertan's of America is about.
Gotcha. I noticed a stew sign outside when I got here. Tell me about that.
We make anywhere from ninety to a hundred gallons of stew once a month. We deliver it first, first of the month.
And you sell it from here?
We sell it from here, call in orders. We do deliver to some seniors, but we are very active, and that's one of our biggest fundraises.
Gotcha. Well, that sounds great. Well, thank you, I appreciate your time.
Stand to man. I'm going to vote, vote, vote.
Vote, 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 yes, excellent. Okay, I know she doesn't want to be filmed, but see who else I can grab here. Let's try these guys. Hi, I'm doing, I'm filming a live stream video. Will y'all be on camera and talk to me?
No, you, no.
No?
I'm not the one you want to talk to.
Neither one of you?
No, I'm sorry.
No?
I'm sorry.
I'm giving dirty, dirty.
Nobody cares, you got a nice Ducks Unlimited shirt.
I probably got that for you.
All right.
I've been watching your stuff, but you do do a good job.
Thank you. I'm, I'm still working on learning equipment and all that stuff.
Oh, I was watching you up at H&amp;H Grocery with them.
Oh, that was fun. That was a great time. Thank you, thank you. All right, let me go over here and try her. Excuse me? I'm doing a video livestream. Would you want to be on camera and give some comments?
Yes, wife, I'll be very fast.
Oh, are you? Well, I mean, I'm asking people too, just about the community and. No, okay, that's fine. Okay, no problem. All right, let me, let me film the floor for a minute. Let's see who else we can find here. Here, let's find her.
And?
I don't want to interrupt.
So she went to the, um, she went to some place.
I'll come back. Let's see. I'm doing a live video stream. Will you be on camera and give comments? No? Anybody's running? I know she won't. Okay, we're getting shy people. Uh, okay, let's try one more over here. We'll try one more over here. How you doing? I'm doing a video livestream. Would you be on camera and give some comments?
Be right now.
I'm doing a livestream video on camera? Would you appear and give some comments?
Yeah, if I want to.
Oh, yeah, of course. Okay, so, so let's start. Tell me who you are.
Clinton Booth.
Clinton Booth.
Clinton Booth.
Where are you from?
I'm from originally.
Yeah.
I'm from Halifax County.
Halifax County? Well, and you're still in Halifax County, right?
Yeah, but I've been to Oklahoma and everything.
Oklahoma? What were you doing in Oklahoma?
Well, I worked for Master Ferguson.
For who?
Master Ferguson.
Okay.
It's a farm practice.
What'd you do for him?
I did all kind of stuff, giving all kinds of, what y'all doing right now.
Really?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
That's what I do now.
Right, right, okay. How involved do you feel in local politics?
In local?
Do you like to be in, involved in local politics? Okay.
And, and I usually get pretty involved with it.
Okay, how have things changed over the years locally?
Locally? It's changed a lot.
Tell me, tell me how.
Yeah, because people, people don't do the things that we want to do. We're like, so we're just pushing it in big channels. It's just, and this way to see what's they would do. And I told my wife, come over here, and I, I said, we need to get to where we are in the, you know.
Right.
In this, in this.
Do you think it used to not be like that? That it used to be where they did more of what they wanted, the citizens wanted?
Yes.
Yeah. What do you think made it change like that?
The people, the people over here.
Yeah?
Yeah. That's the ones that do it.
How do you think we can get young people more involved in the political process?
We have to get them involved in this.
You talking about the candidates or everybody here?
No. The people over here.
Okay.
And I could put, I could put somebody in charge of them, and we could go ahead, and I did this for years.
Really?
Yeah. And I said, we could put people in charge of it, and we could make them, and they handle it.
Right.
And they take care of the problem. But right now, we're just kind of sitting in the back.
Right. Some people say it's like herding kittens.
By what?
Some people say it's like herding kittens.
Yes.
It's hard to gather.
It is. And like I say, I did this for years. It's all the way I can do it.
What do you see is the biggest change in Halifax County? Not politics, but just Halifax County. What's the big change here?
Uh, you talking about what do I think?
Yes, of course. What do you think?
I don't know. I would say it's probably more so how we get the people invited to the, you know, to be impressed.
Right.
Because we, we just sit back and don't notice.
Right.
I mean, you might think we don't, but I think we do.
I believe you.
And it just, we have to do it. You've got to be the ones to do it. And these guys were real nice, that's the pretty guys.
Yeah.
And they're getting that, getting the lead up. Now, that's what we need to do, is get the lead on, and then move on through. But if we don't move on through, we ain't doing no work.
Yeah. I understand. Well, I appreciate your time, thank you.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Jeff. Okay, let's go back over here. Isn't this fun? I love it. Can I try again? I'm doing a livestream video. Will you be on camera and give comments?
About what?
Local politics, Halifax County, whatever.
Well, let me ask what I want. I'm, I'm very concerned about the medical care, especially over there here, in our area.
Can I put you on camera?
I guess so.
Okay, well, tell me who you are first.
I'm Judith Anderson. I'm a retired nurse practitioner.
Okay.
And I have lived in Halifax County all my life. And I am very, very concerned about the lack, no public care, no delivery care in South Boston or Halifax County. Um, and we, with Atachi getting all these mini jobs available, young people are not going to move in because they will find out that they, if they are going to have a family, they will not be able to deliver here and stay here in here.
Why do you think that decision was made?
I don't know, but I don't think it was a good. If, I really don't know why that decision was made. I wish I did. I wish I didn't know that, that. I don't, because I don't, I don't agree with the decision to have some tower come here anyway. And that's me.
Yeah.
And they'll probably jump all over me about that.
Where do, where do mothers go to have their babies?
They go, have to go to, um, North Carolina. They have to, and I don't think they, Dammel, I don't think they can go to Dammel. Lynchburg, they maybe can go to, because Lynchburg General still has all of that. They, a lot of mothers have delivered in their cars trying to get there and stuff. And it's just, it's just been a horrible situation now.
Aside from obstetrics, aside from baby doctors, what are some other concerns? Do you feel like the facilities here are enough for crisis care or trauma or other areas besides obstetrics?
No, I don't think, I don't think we, a lot of physicians have moved out from practice. And so I think we're lacking a lot of names for trauma and everything.
Do you think it's maybe some of the population's decreasing and that's why?
Well, I know the population's changed. When I graduated from nurse practitioner school, because I had to do, or, or everything about it, we had over fifty-five thousand people in our area. Here we didn't.
So you said you're a retired nurse?
Nurse practitioner.
A retired nurse practitioner? And that was here in Halifax County?
Oh, yes, in Long Island, Virginia. We talked to Paul Lucker.
I know the place you're talking about. Gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah. So aside from medical care, what else do you see changing or critical needs in Halifax County?
Well, as we were listening tonight, thinking about the cell service and all of that. I mean, that's, I mean, you may not be able to get your internet, but cell service is very important. Because a lot of people, that's the only thing they have is cell phones.
Do you live right here in this area?
Yes, we live on, on Rabbit Road.
So I take it you're a member of the Ruertan Club?
Yes.
A gentleman was telling me about the things y'all did, because I asked him, since he was from the area, what, what, tell me about this area. What is it I can come here and do and see? And he was saying about making stew, and but for entertainment, you kind of have to go to town. And so I'm sure internet's a huge issue for you.
Well, we have, um, uh, Hughes Net for you, uh, laying up some style.
Right.
So if storms come up and all that stuff, you know, it messes that up. But we're, we're lucky as far as, as far as that.
Is this a close community?
Close community?
Yeah.
A lot of the people are, especially in the Ruertan area.
Right, gotcha. Have you followed local politics your lot, your whole life, or?
Uh, probably more since, uh, um, probably more in the last twenty years or so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Or more.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate your time. It was nice to meet you. I'm originally from Georgia, but I moved to Virginia in two thousand and two.
Okay, and you from, living in this area?
South Boston.
Wow, okay, very good.